So Laura, would you do roll call?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Commissioner Haskell?
Here.
Vice Chair Kopsl.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Present.
And Commissioner Goulden will be absent this evening and Commissioner Targ is just now connecting.
Excellent. Well, why don't we just wait one more minute? So everybody knows we've got seven attendees tonight. So as soon as Nicholas gets on, I'll open up public comment.
Nicholas is on.
Excellent. Welcome. All right. Let the record show that Nicholas is present. All right. So let's get started with meeting. So item is oral questions. I see one hand up. So. See one. Okay, there we go. So Rita. Do you want me to? So you're on mute or great? I'm gonna let, we'll do it the normal way, Laura, unless you tell me otherwise. Okay, great. Hi, welcome.
Oh, thank you for taking my, my call. But you know, today I, this is something that's not on the agenda. But I tried to find where to sign up for, to view the Stanford Wedge story polls. And search and search and search, not, I could not find it. And then I finally found it on a Stanford site that asked me for my personal information. Told me that committee members and committees would have first priority. And then whatever's left over would be to the public. I live very close. My home is very close to the project. I received one of those letters within so many feet. And I hope that accommodations are made for those residents that are close to that project. To be able to view the story polls and, and walk around. And I do not feel comfortable adding my information into a database on a Stanford site. In order to see something in this town. I do not remember anything like that in viewing story polls at my neighbor's house. Having to put my personal information in their contact database. So I hope that the town really looks at this procedure. And figures out a way to be, you know, helpful to the neighbors that live within so many feet of that property and for us not to have to put our personal information into a Stanford database. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. So Laura, will you follow up on that? I mean, it seems like a reasonable request to at least try to get to the bottom of it.
Um, I can say briefly that they are asking for information so that they can confirm appointments. So that they can control the number of people that are on site. So that's the brief answer of why they're doing it that way. Certainly, we can consider asking them to make other accommodations, especially for the immediately adjacent neighbors. So we can pass that along to them.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Tom, Tom Buckles, you're up next. Welcome, Tom.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Also a comment about the possible Stanford Terrace project. And that is that as best I can tell from a map that apparently Stanford provided. There's essentially at least 660 linear feet of building. And if one were walking on the trail on the, on that side of Alpine. And looking at the project, then you would see essentially 660 feet of building mass. There may be one break where you can, or two very small breaks where you can see through to hillside. Beyond that, so I'd like you to really consider in various, the town to really consider in various stages. The notion of what does this mean with respect to a scenic corridor? And I think, I don't know what the result is going to be with respect to tent poles. But I think that if you, you should be compelling a complete set of tent poles and road signs. And I think that somebody should compel a diagram of eye level. What one would see for that 660 feet of walking and just looking perpendicular in the direction you're walking in.
Okay, is that it, Tom?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I would refer you back to the meeting. I think the video is posted. We had a pretty long discussion about the story polls. And they are going to provide some, you know, visual representation of the frontage. As well as the story polls that they're planning to put up. But again, you can look at Stanford site because I think they've got pretty detailed stuff on what they're planning to do. All right, Greg, you're up next. Welcome, Greg. Do you have a last name, just out of curiosity, because I can't see it on the screen?
Franklin, F R A N K L I N.
Great.
Thank you. I have two questions. One relates to the Stanford Wedge project. And my question really has been somewhat anticipated by the prior two speakers. But is what is there today, what we can expect as Portola Valley residents of the Stanford project? So that's the first question. And, and that really relates to the request or requirements that the joint ASCC and PEC meetings requested on July 14th. So I actually did audit that, that joint meeting. It just doesn't seem to me like, it seems like we're going to see more as a public of the prospect of that future development. So that's my first question. And then my second question relates to current zoning in Portola Valley. Particularly with respect to, and I may have the terminology incorrect. But the Village Square subdivision and an Athos Triangle subdivision. Would it be possible for you to provide the current zoning and maximum floor area possibilities of those two sites, particularly with respect to the CC and AP classifications? And make that very visible to the community on, by perhaps posting it on the Portola Valley website? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Because this is oral communication, we can't actually answer questions. But I think Laura can take some of these questions and basically decide what sort of appropriate to host.
Those questions are probably best answered by direct communication with staff. Floor area is parcel specific. It's based on lot area and other factors. So we have floor area calculations for some properties, but they're individually calculated. So it's not something that we post on the website. But I'd be happy to try to answer the other questions. So Greg, if you, for Stanford related things, you can email us at planning@portolavally.net. Is a good way to reach us.
Okay, is there any other oral communication before I move on to the first item for this evening? Kristy, Kristy's on, Kristy's there, Kristy's back. Okay, Kristy, that was, all right, go ahead, Kristy. Kristy Corlin. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. I was noticing today that we're calling the Stanford Wedge Portola Terrace. I think it becomes confusing to the residents. And the original application on the first day it went to the state did say the Stanford Wedge. So I'm wondering if we can be consistent even for the signups to walk the property. It looks like we're going through a portal through Stanford. So I'm wondering if we can be using the word Stanford Wedge consistently. And especially for the walkthroughs next week. I think it's just important for the residents. And I do expect an answer for this.
Okay, well, again, this is oral communication. So I mean, this isn't the time for us to answer this stuff directly. But I do think it's reasonable Laura can ask Stanford, they can sort of make sure that they use clear language.
When the town publishes information, we'll continue to refer to the wedge. I have told the Stanford team that I find it confusing that they're using that name. And I will remind them again that residents are finding it confusing.
Well, will we be doing our own signups for next week? Since this is not a past accepted application yet? Or will you be doing the portal for, because they're taking our information? And just rather have it be a portal through our own town.
Stanford is taking the signups directly so that they can control access to the site. Given the site constraints and the horse boarding facility.
Okay, I think we should look at that signup sheet again. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have one more comment. There's a phone number ending in 7562.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you very much. This is Caroline Vertonghen. Sorry to bother you again. Yes, I will not repeat the comments for Stanford Wedge. But, but it is important for all Portola Valley residents that they are well informed. Because it's really impacting our lives. I sent you several documents or copied you on several documents that I had sent to other departments and town council. And one is, is the, the road improvements that are scheduled right at the time when school is starting. And I really asked why the timing was now when we had all this time before. And I also expressed the issues we have. Residents, not only for Sausal, Palmer, but also Hillbrook. Then we have Antonio Court and then Nate.
Caroline?
Yes.
Can, can I suggest you address this to Public Works? The Planning Commission actually doesn't have anything to do with the road paving schedule. So I mean, you're welcome to continue to comment, but there's nothing we can do about it.
Well, but, but you have a lot of influence and you support the residents. And, you know, because we have complaints about the lack of communication and coordination of services. You seem to be the only resource we can address these issues. We have addressed it to them. And so I feel like we need to inform you as well what's going on.
Okay.
And I hope you got all the documentation, but thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for your comment. I mean, I know Laura's here and so, and I can ping Jeremy just to make sure he's aware of this stuff. But again, it's not directly in the purview of the commission itself. All right, are there any other public comments? All right, so we're at 10 attendees. I just kind of throughout the night try to let people know since I know it's a little frustrating that you can't kind of see what's going on. But that's the best we can do with the Zoom we have right now. All right, so let's move on to the first item, which is new business, which is the site development review for the resident at 35 Possum. Or is there a staff report?
Yeah, I'm going to give the staff report. Tim, are you there? I just want to make sure, is anyone else from the applicant team?
Yes, I'm here. Tim is here.
Okay, Tim, does anyone else need to be a panelist from the applicant team or just you tonight?
I would love to, I, if this question's a civil engineer, it would be nice if the.
Okay, it looks like Dale from BKF.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah.
Okay, just a second. Okay, so I'm promoting Dale to panelist. Okay, so Dale's here as well. Okay, so give me just a second to share my screen.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Dale. And one thing I'd ask for Dale and Tim, if you guys, because you're going to be asked if you want to present. If you guys can go turn your video on when you get to that, if you're willing. It's always nice to be able to see the people we're talking with.
Got it. I'm on.
Yeah, yeah, no, no rush. Just if, when we get to that part. Thanks.
Okay, can everyone see my screen okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm giving the presentation tonight on behalf of Jay Garcia, who's been the planner that's been processing it. So probably everyone out there knows me. I'm Laura Russell, Planning and Building Director. So this is an architectural review and a site development permit for a new residence. Associated improvements and significant tree removal at 35 Possum. So this is the site. You can see that it's an interior lot and it's relatively level towards Possum Lane. And then it's steeply sloped uphill at the rear. And there's a lot of tree canopy generally in this area of Possum. So this is the site plan. There's, you can see there's a main residence. I'm sorry. I really can't present this. Sorry about that. So there's an existing main residence. There's some small sheds. There's a driveway and a front yard swimming pool that's existing on the site. And all of those would be demolished. This is the proposed site plan. You can see that there's a great outbox that has an ADU. And so under the state laws, now the ADU has to be separated and reviewed as a ministerial review. So we're just showing it here for information. So the proposed floor area of the house is 5,140, which is a little bit below the maximum. And then the impervious surface is 6,531. And that's about 1,200 square, square feet below the maximum. This is the floor plan with Possum up at the front. You can see the garage over to the right hand side. And then there's a partial second floor shown here on the left. So these, I'm going to show you the elevations. The elevations were well received by the ASCC. They had some conversation about materials. They had some conversation about color. The applicant team provided some additional information that answered some of those questions. And assured the ASCC members that they were comfortable with the colors and materials as they were proposed. So just flipping through these so you can see them. Here's the materials themselves with the dark colors, dark colors for aluminum doors and windows. There was discussion about the vertical wood siding and the color of that. After discussion, as I mentioned, that was all viewed favorably by the ASCC. So the tree removal for the site is significant. And there was a good amount of discussion around this. And so it is really heavily treed right now. And so the proposal is for removal of 21 significant trees, including four coastal oaks, two California bays and 15 coastal redwoods. There are also a lot of non-significant trees that are proposed to be removed. So there was some discussion with Conservation Committee, consideration for what the different options were. But in the end, ASCC found that this tree removal was appropriate, would open up the site in a way that was positive. And they found that some of the street was kind of dark and overly shaded. So after discussion, they thought that this would be acceptable. So in terms of the site conditions, there is a new driveway location. There's a new pool. So currently it's in the front setback and that moves into the back. New entry path, site retaining walls. And then improvements in the back, kind of typical patio improvements, trellis, fire pit, outdoor barbecue. So the planting plan was also well received. After discussion, it's primarily native plants clustered appropriately around the residence. The reason that the application is coming before the Planning Commission is because of the site development permit grading quantities. And so as you'll recall, everything over 1,000 cubic yards of grading has to come to Planning Commission for review. So under the rollout policy, as we call it, the whole project comes up to Planning Commission. And so the grading includes 30 cubic yards in the area of the building pad fill. 830 cubic yards in the site work cut. And 40, 440 cubic yards in the site work fill. And this is associated with the tree removal, the changes to the grading that go with that in the moving of the driveway to the other location. And so this did not get a significant amount of discussion at the ASCC. They found this to be acceptable considering the proposal. So the lighting was also well received by ASCC. You can see here that it's relatively minimal. Early on, there were some recommendations for reductions to the lighting, which the applicant made. And so all of these comply with the town's requirement for night sky lighting and low lumens. And we're found to be the minimum that's necessary for safety. So ASCC reviewed the project twice. ASCC has been doing what we're calling a conceptual design review, which is a very early review before all the plans are developed. My understanding is the applicant team wanted to participate in that because there was quite a bit of tree removal. So wanted to get initial impressions on that tree removal. They were favorable around the project at that conceptual review and gave some feedback. And then on July 26th, there was a formal ASCC review. And ASCC voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project. They added just one condition to the staff recommended conditions. And that was to say that the prior to landscape final, there should be one member of the ASCC to approve the landscape screening between this property and the adjacent property. So staff sent the normal notice of the public meeting to all property owners within 300 feet. We have not received any new comments from the ASCC. Time of review, at the time of ASCC, we received favorable comments in support of the project. One in advance and two residents attending the meeting. And one specifically noting that they supported the removal of the trees. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the architectural and site development permits for the residents' landscape improvements and removal of significant trees. And there's draft conditions of approval for your consideration. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions and the applicant team is here as well.
Thank you, Laura.
So are there any clarifying questions for Laura?
Yeah, I have one. Laura, I did not see the ASCC minutes, which would have been nice to review on some of these aspects that you said were more controversial. And also I saw in the Conservation Committee comments of reference to some prior recommendations that they had had. And it would have been nice to see those. I think I finally found them just now online, but I'm not going to be able to read them. I, could you describe the, the, because the tree removal, what the main points that, that the ASCC and the Conservation Committee were focused on? Since that we don't have it in the packet.
I would actually ask whether Tim could highlight some of those issues. He was involved in that, so he could probably provide better detail. So we can ask Tim to cover that in his presentation.
Okay, and then my only other question was the 1,300 fill and finish that gives us kind of insight here. Where does that fall in terms of projects in town? Is that on the low end, high end of what actually comes before us? Just a context would be helpful.
Kind of the order of magnitude of the grading?
Yeah.
This is, this is a medium amount of grading in town. So it triggers the Planning Commission review. But it's not very high compared to other projects that you review. It's fairly typical still.
Okay.
Any other questions for Laura before we move on to the applicant? All right, seeing none, Tim, you want to take it from here?
I'm sure. My name is Tim Chappell from Arcana Architecture. I'm the architect working on the project. Also have Dale Layla, Layla, yeah, from BKF. And what we would like to talk to you about today is I think the reasons why we're here for the Plan Commission, which is specifically, I mean, the property you've been to, as you can see, the property itself, it's a very, it's a flat lot for the most part in the foreground as it faces on Parkland. And then it has a sloping uphill. The existing house has a pool in the front yard, as you saw. And the house itself, the existing house is running parallel to the street. And ideally, what we're trying to do is replicate a house as far forward to the street as possible to get as much natural sunlight. And that's what we've done in our new design and our site plan. And what we've also done is eliminated the pool in the front yard. The house itself, we have the darker mutant palette, muted palette to kind of make it recede. And we had this kind of modern, you know, traditional forms of agrarian buildings kind of broken down as pavilion-like to make the massing seem more rural, more, you know, sympathetic to kind of the massing of the, of the house, of the neighborhood. The two-story mass has turned sideways to minimize the, the two-story mass against the street. I think all of these things are done to kind of minimize the visual impact on the community. When we were working on the design of the house, the trees is a significant impacting element of this property. When we met with, you know, talked to neighbors and talked to the town very beginning, we looked at the big trees that exist in ones that are along the street, which are all these cedars. And obviously the neighbor, all the neighbors are pretty much pretty excited and giddy about the potential removal of those cedars along that street. And it does have a huge impact on the feel of that street, the shading of it, et cetera. So we got really positive feedback from the community and through, even, and also when we met with the Conservation Group, obviously the ASCC, everybody was positive on that. Then next discussion that was talking about was a group of redwoods that are, were planted linearly along the, like you see here on the eastern side. And there are the grouping here of redwoods on the western edge. And when we were looking at the concept of this, we originally went through the first conceptual, the design review process with the ASCC. One of the things that came up at that meeting was, you know, we've been through, I've been through a lot of hearings, obviously, late, over the last few years. And the, and the, and the Conservation Group has been really pushing to even remove redwoods a lot of times lately. Because they're saying they're not natural in some of these valley locations, et cetera. And when we had our meeting with them, they said, well, these are really thriving in this location. So they said, you know, we would actually like you to keep more of these trees if you could try. And we were discussing originally like grouping, having like a couple groupings where we're keeping some here and some here potentially. And then trying to keep a little bit in here. And in concept, when we met with the Conservation Group, we agreed to that as a, as a way to kind of, you know, it would be nice to keep some groupings, but kind of eliminate the wall effect. As you know, right now, it's like a yew of really tall trees, like a fence, like a, you know, 50-foot fence around the property on three sides. So we had that in concept. And then what happened, as we were progressing to kind of do the full story, when we went through, we got feedback from the county. When we were going through the, trying to create annotations from that. Laura, it's not going to be me. Okay. So when we were going through the, the design of the process, we did come back. We got, we started receiving comments back from the, from the County Health Department. And what was brought up specifically was this leach field. And in the, in the, the county feedback, they were putting more strict guidelines on the location of the leach field, et cetera. And that was a cause, a ripple effect from the design perspective. And it's why Dale's also on here. It ended up really making it impossible for us to keep some of the, the tree grouping that was, was originally thought about over in this location. And it impacted the ability and to put the house in here and to keep some in here because the house is pushing toward a setback. And so we did, went back to the Conservation Group and said, look, we're going to have to keep a more of a, we can't keep two little groups. We're going to have a little more of a one group. two little groups. We're going to have a little more of a one group here, and we're not able to keep the grouping here, because there's no way to kind of make this house work." And then, we also had to add in some more site walls on the uphill part to really move these site walls farther out. You can see, that's why their dad, why we had the cloud around here. We had to move the site walls to get the septic to fit in here. All these things were done really to make the house, the property buildable and work with, aggressively couldn't fit the house on the property with the setbacks and, and everything else that's going on. And all those, what that did do is that did impact the cut and fill calculation, which is also kind of where we ended up with the numbers. As you could imagine, we were kind of surprised we actually exceeded the requirements requiring this meeting tonight, because the property seems like, well, it's a flat property for most part, seems like you'd be able to keep it, not have to do a lot of earthwork. But because of the leach field that we have to wrap around here and et cetera, and the limitations we have, that was the reasons why we ended up with these site walls on the back of the property, which ended up having a larger cut and fill calculation. So, just to be clear, the, the reason we're in the planning commission is, is really, we're just trying to make the house fit the minimal size that we can for the yard, for the septic, and et cetera. And it wasn't, you know, we're not trying to do something excessive. We're trying to do something bigger in that scope. It was just a direct inflection of requirements from the county and et cetera going on. Because all the intents and purposes, as you could see, and we've done that in the site plan, is really to get the house as far forward towards the street as we physically could, which is what we've done in the design, in essence, right here. It's just a matter of getting this kind of terracing. And we try to break the massing of that terrace, and we have to make it feel as natural as possible. But that's just the backstory of, of kind of the triggers for today's meeting. If you have any questions, I can talk about anything specifically.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions for Tim? Yeah, go ahead, Anne. You're muted.
I have just one. Can you talk more about the eight hundred and thirty cubic yard cut? That number, I mean, plus the fill is what triggers it coming to the planning commission. And maybe this is a naive statement, but when I first saw, like, a kind of flat lot, I thought, "Oh, yeah, that's not going to have a lot of cut and fill." I think of those big cuts and fills on slope things where people are redoing a hill and...
Yeah. Well, that's exactly my point. I didn't have Dale talk about that, but you hit the nail on the head. And that's exactly what my surprise of this project was too. It's flat, we're moving the house to the front, what could go wrong, right? I mean, why would we need to do any major cut? And it was driven by the, the leach field, but Dale, why don't you touch base into technical about that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you. So, I would agree, if you go out and you look at the site, it does appear relatively flat, which I, I can tell you from, as, as an engineer, that always, that always makes me a little bit concerned, because we like to see our homes elevated up to ensure that you get positive drainage away from the house. If you're looking at this, this is actually a good plan to see. But the existing house, where the existing house sits in the site, and if you look at the finished floor of the house, Possum Lane, on, on this side of Possum Lane, it's actually higher than the, than the home elevation is. And then, you have the hill behind it, which is also higher, and you really just start to kind of break, break grade, match grade from the street to the house, kind of close to the end of Possum Lane. And so, if you, if you look at the house today, there's, there's literally very few places for water to go, other than, other than into the existing home. And so, one of the, one of the main points that's driving up the earthwork quantities is, is elevating the new house up to ensure proper drainage. And so, if you compare the finished floor of the existing house to the new house, I think we're coming up roughly eighteen inches from, from where the existing finished floor is at. And, and that's just enough grade to get positive release drainage out the back, or at the front to, to Possum Lane, where we want to get water out to the street, and, and also allowing for us to, I guess I can't clear my, I'm trying to clear my annotation.
I'm having trouble with that too, Dale.
Yeah, also, just understanding that we have this huge hillside behi- behind us, which is, which is draining a substantial amount of water down the hill towards the site, ensuring that we get, if you look at the existing condition, this hill kind of starts to flatten out, and it actually continues to slope down right into the existing home, where it's at today. And so, elevating the house up and also carving out some of the grading in the back to ensure that we can drain away from the house and create a low point along these walls and along the back portion of the house, and ensure that we can get water to drain out and around to, to the street and safely protect the home from any, any drainage issues. There's also a small area on the back of the slope here where the existing slope is, 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 is fairly steep. It's steeper than, than what you'd consider a, a stable slope. It's, it's unstable and consolidated material. Likely, if you look in this existing condition, it's, it's a little bit harder to tell on this plan, but there's actually like an existing road cut with, which comes up the hill here, which a lot of these older road cuts, the way they're constructed is soils removed from the uphill side and just kind of pushed off the hill to the downhill side. It's not, it's not compacted and under any stable condition. And so, just to help facilitate with, with that drainage, removing some of that material and, and, and restoring that slope more to kind of a natural continuity, there's additional cut back here to reshape that area and provide that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the team?
I just have one that's fairly naive. Is the sewer nowhere near these properties? I'm just kind of curious that the septic is so big. Although, I understand what you're saying about the, the sensitivity of needing to make sure the water drains.
If, if, if we could connect to a sewer line, sewer main, absolutely, we would, we would love to do that, but unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, it's not. That's, that's something we look at on every project upfront. And there's actually state health laws that, that require you to connect if you're within certain proximity, but we're we're so far off the side, it's not, it's not really feasible.
Nicholas, do you have anything? I'll assume no. I had a couple of quick questions. One is on sort of retention of water on the property. I mean, you have some plan, you're not going to just drain this hillside out onto the street. You've got some plan to try to retain it on the property for some period of time?
Yeah, we're providing stormwater detention in line with the town's requirements to detain any increases and runoff and consolidate runoff on site. So, there is a stormwater infiltration tank. It's, you could kind of see it on here. It's, it's shown down at the bottom end of the site. It's a little tricky on this site, because it, you, it needs to stay separate from, it needs to stay separate from the rest of the septic system and the drain field. You want to keep your stormwater separate from the, from the septic. So, it's a little bit of, the septic takes priority. It's a little bit of a balancing act, but we are providing storage.
And then, the other question, Tim, I think this is more for you. I noticed that there was like a six-foot wooden fence against the house and some of the siding and the fire pit. Are you guys thinking about sort of the new kind of fire hardening that we're doing? When you're looking at this, I mean, I know they're not, all that stuff's not in place, so I'm, I'm not trying to push this on you as a requirement, but I mean, it's home hardening's coming up, not just to be sort of egregious set of regulations, but to make houses safer. And, you know, I know one of the things they're trying to do is, you know, not put flammable things next to houses and fire pits, depending on how they're done, you know. Always worry me, you know, particularly in the summer, it's hot, it's dry, and then people do crazy stuff. So, I'm just curious how you thought about sort of the kind of fire hardening of this place, sort of maybe above and beyond the current requirements.
Well, it's interesting. I mean, that's a hot topic, obviously, this, literally a hot topic. So, I, I do feel like, I feel like, you know, there's a lot of things that we're going to, even talking to the owners, we're going to be evaluating, I think, more critically as we develop, you know, going into permit, drawings, et cetera. So, I do feel like we're going to have an active discussion on that on many levels. And I, and I think even from a product line, I do feel like even, you know, during construction, you know, construction takes years, right? There's, there's going to be hopefully some new advancements in like, this is something like fencing and screenings and things like that. Things that will be kind of attaching itself to the house outside the footprint of the house, right? That will be a better product to choose from. So, I, my, my response to that is, we are going to insert this project and every project in this community with kind of open ears and eyes to see what's available out there right now. Because I think it's going to change. I think, I think there's a lot of motivation, which is good, you know, it hasn't been as much. So, I don't have any direct answers to that, and it's that we are going to be very open-minded. And the owners even expressed, because it was, even at our last meeting, it was discussed, you know, about fighting and materials and things like that, to kind of be proactive and be aware of options that could come, be coming into the environment right now to think about.
Okay, yeah, great. Yeah, and I think that's all I'm trying to do, is just to encourage you, because, I mean, you're building a new house. This is the time to make it as fire safe as you can. It's easier now than it's going to be five years from now.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Can I ask one, one follow-up? Because I think my initial question about what the ASCC discussed on the trees and what the conservation committee, what their key points were, hasn't really, it's been kind of at a very high level, but let me just ask a finer point. There are no, no significant trees that you're comfortable you can keep in those areas, given those constraints. Is that correct?
You're talking about the redwoods that were proposed going to be removed specifically, or?
Yeah, I think those were the ones that the conservation committee were, were noticing and encouraging you to try and keep. And I just want to understand, you think there is no chance?
Well, we, no, we don't. And that was, that was our, kind of our, I'm sorry, but because of the, of the last, we, in concept, where we met with the, the conservation group, is we were looking at trying to keep, like, you know, the wall of redwood at the lower part of the, we're, we're trying to keep like a small, maybe a couple over here, a couple over here. But when we came to the, when we actually got out there and started inspecting the, the root structures of these trees, and they're far out of the ground, and the roots are high up, it, it's, any foundation and pool and all that would have just, it would have really made these impossible to, they would never have worked. And so, we were trying to be very honest with them and said, "These are the trees we know we can make work, and we, and we can, you know, we have a fighting chance." And we just said, you know, "I'm sorry, but because of the new health department, we can't keep anything over here, because otherwise, then we are talking about cutting the hill back even more, which is not desirable." And the reason I was talking about kind of the location of the walls is the, the wall location was being driven, you know, not purely just for outdoor area, but in the end, it was being pushed farther to the, up the hill because of the, the health department requirement. So, this is, that was the issue. And it's unfortunately, like in the front yard, just to get the driveway in and et cetera, that wiped out a lot of, you know, this area too. And so, it's, it's been, we've, we've been really trying our best, and I, I think that was received by the design review people. That wasn't like we were trying to skirt the issue. We agreed in concept, and then we had amended.
And you never circled back with the conservation committee, or did you?
I don't think we formally did. I, I can't remember. We, we issued a letter to them and explained to them exactly what hap, or why happened, but I don't know if we ever heard a follow-up from them. I mean, I can, we can ask. We didn't inform them.
Okay, thank you.
So, Tim, would you stop sharing the screen? I'm not sure who has it at this point, but, so there you go. Great, thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this project? All right, so seeing none, let me bring it back to the commission. Who would like to start off? Anybody? I'll take a hand. Anne, thank you.
I'm fine. No, it seems like the ASCC has reviewed it and the conservation committee, and they review a lot of plans and ask a lot of questions about the trees, especially the significant trees. As I expressed, I was a little surprised that a, what it looks like a flat lot to me has so much cut and fill, but I understand the reasons, and I can easily believe that drainage is a big topic on this lot, just the way it has that big slope behind it. So, I am in favor, and I like the way the house looks and the materials. I'm in favor of the project and approving the cut and fill sum that needs to be done.
All right, thank you. Nicholas? You're, you're muted if you think we...
And the ASCC has done a careful job here. I think that there is a clear explication of the need for both the, the cut and also for, you know, on a flat lot, which also, again, is surprising, and also the removal of the trees. It's interesting to see the trade-offs that end up being need to be made, but it is completely understandable by, within the context, and it looks like a well-thought-out design with thoughtful comments provided by the ASCC. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sure. So, I, I appreciate the detailed explanation of the drivers for the design, and in particular on the trees. I've been asking a lot of questions about those. The reason is because I am concerned about this, given that twenty-two out of twenty-seven significant trees on the property are going to be removed. And I don't want there to be precedent presumed for other projects in town that we're, we're going soft on significant trees. So, just for the record, because the, the applicant has engaged with the conservation committee and the ASCC on this, because they had a detailed explanation for the site-specific drivers that are creating complications for this particular project, I don't like to see it, but I do appreciate that they've been as thoughtful as they can be, and the ASCC being comfortable with it. I do give them deference on it. But I want to make it very clear for the record that significant trees are something that shouldn't be assumed is unimportant in this town. It is very important to us generally. The only other thing is, the design seems, you know, great. I do notice that the ASCC commented on the outdoor lighting, but with such significant windows, I expect there to be a lot of light spill from the windows. And, you know, it's a, a topic for Laura to consider how that's handled, or maybe we can have an offline discussion, because there's an awful lot of people that don't put shading down or have a plan for that light spill, which can be much more significant than some outside. So, that's not anything to do with this particular project. I, I support it. But I do think it, if we look at our broader perspective on our role in town, that's something I'd like the planning director to, to consider, maybe get back to me on what the framework is now, and ask a question on how it should be going forward. But thank you. I'll, I'll support it.
Great, thanks, Judith. Yeah, and I, I second your comment. I mean, we're certainly not looking for clear cut, which this project sort of feels like, but, but I do understand the issues. So, other than that, I mean, I'm supportive of it as well. And, and Tim, I think you answered my question, which is, I, I think just as you go forward, making sure that you're making this as fire safe as possible is just a wise investment for the owners as well. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve this project and the cut and fill. And what, what exactly do you need, Laura? I mean, you, you basically drafted something, and that's basically what you'd like approved tonight. Is that correct?
It's a motion to approve the architectural review and the site development permit.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, grab a second.
I'll second.
All right, I have a second from Nicholas. Laura, could I, well, let's see, is there any additional discussion?
Yeah.
All right, so with that, Laura, could I have a roll call?
Commissioner Tark?
Aye.
Commissioner Haskell?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kofstel?
Aye.
Hi.
Chair Taylor.
Hi. Passes unanimously, um, Tim and Dale, congratulations, um, we look forward to you. Coming up with a great project and building a nice house and bringing in some nice new neighbors.
Thank you very much, everybody, thank you.
Good night. Alright, moving on to the second item, are there any commission reports? Alright, seeing none, um, move on. Staff reports, the safety. Laura, this is you, I assume?
I'm sorry, with respect to the, uh, uh, commission reports.
I'm sorry.
Should report that, uh, Anne and I, uh, both attended the kickoff meeting for the housing element. Uh, ad hoc, uh, committee, uh, yesterday. Uh, it was an impressive group of people, we have, uh, uh, a chair and, uh, and a vice chair. Uh, and, uh, is impressed by the range of, uh. Uh, of thoughtful interests that were expressed as well as, uh, the similarities. Uh, that were expressed there, uh, as well. So I think that there's a lot of diversity, uh, of. Uh, view as to the advantages of, or what we would like to see within the housing element. Uh, but also the core values, uh, of, uh, of the, of the town were also. Uh, of course, uh, uh, enunciated, uh, by each one of the members of the committee. Is also helpful and it may be worth, uh, reviewing. Uh, the minutes, uh, to understand the legal context in which. Uh, the housing element is, uh, moving forward. This is not an optional, uh, exercise, the. Rena numbers are, uh, indeed what they are, uh, at this, uh, at this point. Uh, and, uh, their consequences, uh, both for not timely moving forward with the housing element as well as. Additional consequences for not actually meeting the, the substantive, uh, numeric numbers, uh, within it. Uh, and I think that was helpful. Issues of fire and land movement, of course. Uh, uh, were identified as constraints, uh, as well as issues. Uh, of course, of, on maintenance of the, uh, of the environment that all brings us to, to the town that we are in.
So Nicholas, who are the chair and the vice chair?
Anne.
Um, the chair is just a moment, Jocelyn.
Fisher.
Fisher. And the vice chair is Al Sil, I remember that one.
Yeah, you know him, yeah, excellent.
Yeah, he seems like a nice guy.
Got some, some flaws, but.
But he, but he's okay generally, yeah. Great, well, thank you for that update, um, and I, and we'll look forward to updates, um, as the, uh, committee proceeds.
Yeah, yes, I was also, uh, impressed with the whole group. And their motivations and I thought Laura and is it Adrian, the new person, did a really good job explaining the background and the. Issues and consequences, so that was good.
Great. Um, so are there any public comments on the commission reports? We've got seven attendees currently. Alright, so seeing none, let me move on to staff report. Alright, so now Laura, staff report.
Great, and thank you. So I wanted to give you a brief update on what's going on with the safety element. And so, um, I included in the memo, if you wanted to read the full staff report or watch the presentation, um, you have the links, um, there in the memo. So you are probably aware, we've talked about it a little bit, that the state law has changed and now safety elements. Also have to be updated every eight years, the same way housing elements do. And I think this is a reflection of changing priorities, um, in the state. Um, climate change and the things that are coming along with that are really bringing this to the forefront of people's minds. So there is a lot of law that we're, um, now following that's been evolving over the last couple of years. So the safety element update process is being updated now with the housing element. And it includes the steps that you can kind of imagine for this kind of undertaking. There's quite a bit of research and data gathering. Um, different types of assessments, mapping and analysis. And there's gotten to be a lot of different, um, agencies that have resources on this now, so this has really been an emerging field. And so there are federal and state and local agencies that we can draw from, that we haven't had access to that kind of information before. And the idea of the safety element is to identify certain hazards that are called out within the law and then any local hazards. And try to reduce the severity of those hazards, um, in terms of any loss to people, property, um, environment. And so for us, of course, um, the hazards that we have a lot of focus on are related to fire safety and geologic conditions. So we'll be collecting a lot of data around those areas, um, public comment is also always. Um, a very important part of this process, both in state law as well as in our town process. There's a review step for safety elements by different state agencies and for us that includes CAL FIRE. So they have a land use planning unit that will be reviewing our draft safety element. There's also a step where Woodside Fire Protection District, um, reviews our safety element. And their team will be invited to participate actively, um, in the development of the safety element, so we'll be working on that with them. There's of course the SEQA review, California Environmental Quality Act, like all these policy documents that we do. And then of course Planning Commission review, um, with a recommendation up to Town Council for ultimate adoption. On the same timeframe as the housing element, so needing to be completed by the end of next year, the end of twenty twenty-two.
So will there be an ad hoc committee to work on the safety element as well?
There will not be a separate ad hoc committee.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll get into just a little bit of, um, what we presented to council and, and what they gave us some direction on, so. Um, I mentioned that there's quite a bit of requirements that are in state law themselves. And so there's specific things that we have to analyze that are within the state law. And the rules around fire safety have gotten, as you can imagine, more strict in recent years. And there's also required analysis now related to evacuation planning, and so we analyze the network. Um, of roads, so what, how people move throughout the community. And identify places of more vulnerability and then take that into consideration, um, in evacuation planning. And potentially in land use planning and zoning. And so that's a really important and interesting new piece that's added now. In addition to state law, um, we rely on guidance that comes from the state, and so this is the Office of Planning and Research, OPR. So they're the ones that publish a lot of the guidance that we rely on all the time, like the SEQA guidelines that we talk about. Those kinds of things are all, um, coming from OPR. So they have two different pieces of guidance that we'll be relying on. One is generally for updating required elements of the general plan. And so that's a big thick, um, booklet that talks about, here's everything you need to do when you're updating your, um, general plan elements. And then there's also a specific fire hazard planning technical advisory. And this is now referenced in the state law, and so we're required, um, to look at it and to review it. And to comply with requirements that are in there. And so right now, there's only a draft, um, of this technical advisory. The OPR has been updating it, but I've been having back and forth, um, email exchange, uh, with their staff at OPR. And they're telling me that we should go ahead and use that guidance, um, as our, as our guide, as we're working on this. And that the final changes shouldn't be too substantive. So if this is something that commissioners or the public is interested in. There's a lot of information in that, um, fire technical guidance, if people want to get up to speed on that. There's also really great example policies that we can draw from as we move through the process. So there's still a lot more resources than there ever has before, ever has been before, and for all the reasons that you can imagine. Um, so in terms of how we're gonna go about this work. Um, the council decided to, uh, upon the staff recommendation to hire the same firm, Urban Planning Partners. Um, that we've hired for the housing element support. And so we think that this is a good team. Um, in particular, they have a really great transportation consultant, Farron Pierce, that's a leader in the field. Um, and they also have a fire consultant that is highly qualified and that's Deer Creek Resources. And Urban Planning Partners and Deer Creek Resources are working on a couple of different plans. Related to fire safety, including the housing element, um, for the city of Paradise. So these are teams that are working on, um, you know, really intensive fire safety issues for other communities. So we thought that the benefits of having the same consultant team with that we could have, you know, more efficient communication and. Better schedule management, um, and a better integration of the. Things that we're learning from the safety element and bringing those into the housing element process. So those were the reasons that we recommended we use the same consultant, so that's gonna be the path, um, that we're going forward on and. Council did approve the contract with Urban Planning Partners. So in terms of the kind of literal process, um, to Anne's question. Um, there's going to be community wide outreach, um, and then the consultant team. Um, and staff will be drawing from all of those best practices and from that data and working on draft goals, policies and implementation measures. And then what we'll do is we'll take that information and go out to our existing town committees. Because we have town committees with so much expertise in these different areas. So we'll take that information, um, and go to Adhec Wildfire Preparedness, Emergency Preparedness, Sustainability. And Geological Safety Committee and get feedback from all of those committees on those initial draft goals and policies. And the public can then participate in any or all, um, of those different meetings within those different specialty areas. And then there'll be detailed review by this body, by the Planning Commission, um, and then a recommendation up to council. And then we'll be doing communications around this as well, um, kind of the things that we often do with the town news. Um, we'll have, we have a, this, we'll have a special e-notice list, so people who want to sign up for the emails for the different topics. So we have one for the housing element, you know, we have a normal one for Planning Commission, normal one for council. But if people want to hear specifically about what's going on with the safety element, they'll be able to sign up to get those notifications in their email. So that's the summary, um, we're gonna get started on the work pretty much right away and then work on an overall schedule. That brings these important parts of the safety element into the housing element process. So I'll be giving you additional updates as we move through this, but I wanted to make sure you were aware, um, of this review by council. Last week, um, and the council being, uh, approving the contract, so I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Laura. Are there any additional questions for Laura? Okay, um, are there any, uh, public comments on the staff report? Alright, I see one, Rita, Rita Combs, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question, um, great report, Laura, uh, just wondering if we have access to the minutes. From that discussion at the town council meeting. Uh, when will we be able, I, I noticed that the town council meeting for next week is canceled. But would we be able to have access to those meeting minutes, um, concerning the safety element? That would be helpful, thank you.
Um, I, I don't know, that's a great question, Rita, let me check and see if, um, usually they don't get published, as you know, until the next packet comes out. Um, there should be a meeting summary that's posted online, the Zoom meeting, um, link should be there, but let me check about the minutes.
Thank you.
And then also you had mentioned the draft document from the state agency. Is that up on the website someplace? Because that might be worth putting a link to it.
Uh, that's not on the website, we haven't created any specific content for the safety element yet, but that's great feedback, I'll get it up there when we do that.
Okay, great.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Okay, Kristy, Kristy Corley, you're up next. Go ahead, Kristy.
Yes, thank you, I was just wondering, we're having a housing element committee with the public. And I'm wondering if the safety element, uh, would also have a public access to that committee? Have you considered that at all?
So I, I'm not sure what your question was, you're asking whether there's public input to the process?
Uh, actually a committee, I noticed there's a housing element committee and I'm wondering with the safety element. If you also plan on doing a public committee, including the public in that committee.
Right, I think Laura just answered that question, uh, that was a question that Anne answered and Laura already answered that question. So the answer is there won't be a separate committee for the safety element, but it will be integrated with the hu- housing element.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Alright, so seeing none, um, we'll close this section and we'll move on to item four. Which is approval of the minutes from July twenty-first. So, are there any comments on the minutes? And I look to my left, but probably right, relatively speaking to Judith.
I only have two, um, read page one ninety-one. And it's the paragraph in the middle of the page or toward the bottom half. And it starts, Commissioner Hasko asked, and there's just a grammar glitch, I think, if non-combustible materials is listed. I think in the first and second line is, is or, or sorry, is should be are, A R E. And then the next one is on red page one ninety-two, where they're talking about Chair Taylor about halfway down, a little bit farther. And there is a clear indistinction of what can stay and what should be removed. It's kind of a nice oxymoron, but I think it's supposed to be clear distinction, and those were mine.
Great, thank you. Nicholas, did you have some?
Uh, on page one ninety-five. That midway through. There is a reference where, uh. Uh, Commissioner Targ said, uh, has a, uh, strong chance. Of approval and it would be stronger chance. So it's a comparative.
Thank God we get our grammar right, thank you.
You're most welcome.
Anything else?
That's what I got.
Alright, Anne?
Yeah, and mine's complicated, I'm afraid it's not easy to fix, but let me bring it up and see what you all think. It relates to page one ninety-two, um, the third full paragraph where I'm talking. And my recollection is that when the meeting started. I had the impression, or the feeling that it was gonna be bad, if here's a slope. It was very bad to put in a, any building, an ADU at the top of that slope, because fire could race up and poof, burn it up. So I was concerned about the language that I thought prevented building anywhere near a twenty percent slope. And I had been thinking, no, we should rewrite it, so it just eliminates the bad thing of putting a building at the top. And I actually think the fire marshal kind of agreed with that and we were going down that path. Through later comments of the fire marshal and the public. Um, I came to understand that it's bad to have a building, an ADU, anywhere on that slope, even at the bottom. Because if it were to catch on, the building were to catch on fire, the fire would race up. So maybe the building wasn't at risk because it was near a slope, but the community is more at risk. If there's buildings on a slope either top or bottom. So I eventually got to the point where, like, yeah, the way it was written at first was okay. Um, you know, there's a sentence here on red page one ninety-two, third way down, she said. This is speaking about me, she said the way it is written now, an ADU can be built at the bottom, but not at the top. I actually thought where I started was I thought it was gonna prevent all building there. And here, it's what I recall, Mr. Bullard saying, yeah, they're trying to prevent it at the top. Uh, I mean, I could just ask for a change there, but I'm a little hesitant, because I feel like there were other comments later. That made me change my opinion on that, but those aren't in the minutes, you know, they were, either seemed too minor. So I'm not actually sure what to recommend, I feel like what's written here is not quite right. Um, but, but it's, to get the minutes really right, or the way I felt like, uh, would reflect it, it, there needs to be more. Changes. What do you guys recommend?
Well, my, my recollection, it was kind of a convoluted conversation, um, so I didn't read the minutes and. So I didn't read the minutes and I think they felt like it represented kind of how we sort of wound our way through it. But but I defer to you, you may remember, you know, better the details. I'm hesitant to make wholesale changes to the minute. I mean, do you feel it's really, I mean, I understand that you certainly never want to feel like you were kind of misquoted. But do you feel like we're missing the essence? Because I would say if we're not missing the essence, if you would be okay, it would be nice to maybe just approve these minutes. Otherwise, I think we'd have to ask Laura to go back and have the transcript reviewed and then we'll have to review the minutes again. So you know, again, I'm, I'm, I remember it being kind of convoluted. And I guess I defer to you on how strongly you feel about whether we're missing the essence. Because at the end, I think we did get to the important part. And that's sort of what I see the historical record for. But how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I guess I'm torn. I mean, I could live with it. I am a little uncomfortable that also the fire marshal says here that the ordinance is trying to avoid an ADU being built at the top of a slope. I think that's accurate at this point in a meeting, but I think later he did clarify that, no, no. They don't, at the bottom of the slope is bad too. And I do wish, I feel like that is missing a big essence. That's on raid page 196. Oh, good. It is, Mr. Buller concurred with a comment made by the public speaker that having a structure at the bottom of a slope will advance the fire up the slope faster and jeopardizes any structures at the top. So that's, I think, the corollary. Okay. Oh, that's great. Okay, I can live with it then.
Okay, thank you. Because that'll let us approve the minutes. Otherwise, we're going to have to loop this back around. So all right. So any other comments? So with that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. A second? Anne, second, thank you. Laura, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Tark?
I.
Commissioner Haskell?
I.
Vice Chair Kofstil?
I.
Chair Taylor?
I. Okay, great. So that passes unanimously and that's the end of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll always make that.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All in favor. This, we don't need a roll call, right? We could just do verbal. I.
I.
Great. Well, thank you all for your attendance. And there are five attendees left. Thank you for hanging in there and attending with us. Good night, everyone.
Night, thanks, everyone.